Okay, we'll call this ready to order. Start with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
America.
And to the Republic which stands.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible, with liberty.
Liberty and justice.
Okay. Um, just some guidelines for the conference call and video conference board meeting today. We met the seventy-two hour guideline to set this up and we have a motion later, but just so we know this, first of all, we are going to have to call the roll. So when we call the roll, I'll go through and for the record, who's here? Don, would you call the roll of the, I'll write it down, of the board members?
Okay. Angie.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Joel.
Present.
Bruce.
He's trying.
Dustin is present.
Joe.
Here, present.
Myself, present.
I know Bruce is trying to get on.
Okay.
So for a process of the meeting, every board has your roll call, so if you introduce a motion, please say, state your name when you're making the motion and also the second needs to state their name for the motion also. Everybody understand that one? All right.
Yes.
Is Bruce, are you on now?
Yes, I am, I'm here.
Bruce is on conference call only, okay? So we have, uh, everyone's in attendance at the meeting. So first item, we have approval agenda.
Joel Bordewick, move approval for.
One second on that, Don, you had some.
We need to add an item number eleven, we need to change that to an action item. So item number eleven will be the action item.
All right, so I'll move forward for approval with that, uh, with that adjustment to the agenda, Joel Bordewick.
I will second that, Barb Jones.
Motion and a second, any questions or any discussion? If not, then we'll proceed to vote. Angie.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes, say, Don, say Joseph, will ya, so I don't get confused with Joel. Do you hear me?
Okay, say that again.
When you, when you ask for my name, say Joseph, will ya?
Okay.
Then I won't know that it's Joel.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I will call in the same order all the time, so I don't confuse myself.
Oh, okay.
So all votes are positive, the motion passes. Item number four is approve the project application and payment certificates for the past period of time as submitted in your packet. The total amount of those figures should be one million, six hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Somebody make a motion to move that ahead.
I, Dustin Stevens, would like to make a motion to move that ahead.
Angie Clausen will second that.
Great, motion Dustin, second by Angie to move that ahead with the figure that was announced. Any questions on any of that? If not, then we'll proceed to vote on that motion to accept all the payments, stuff with the amount of one million, six hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars and twenty-seven cents. Angie.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Joseph.
Yes.
And myself, yes, motion carries unanimously again. Item number five is the approval of the project change order on the CTE building. This was to do with fire-related window frames. And the amount of that, uh, change order is one sixteen thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and five cents. And that's in front of you now too, in your packet.
I understand this, this is the windows that are between the hallway, by the weight room and the new gym. The state said we had to have fire-rated windows in there, so this is the changer to meet that requirement.
Motion to move that forward.
Angie Clausen, approval.
Bruce, I second it.
Angie moves and Bruce seconds the motion for the amount of sixteen thousand, nine hundred sixty dollars and five cents on the change order. Which is actually change order number five hundred for the record. Any questions on that? If not, we'll proceed to vote on that motion. Angie.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Joseph.
Yes.
And myself, yes, motion passes seven yes to nothing. Item number six is approval of the furniture bids for the elementary building. Those were all in your packet.
I would have Peggy and/or Jamie speak to this, as those two led to point on this entire process while I was out.
Okay, very good.
I guess I'll talk on it in your packet, um, first thing is just a summary of it, of what each item number represents, classroom seating, staff seating, things like that. You can turn to the chart that is included in your board packet, this is a chart that actually shows the actual amounts that were bid and the alternates. Anything in the light green is what, um, you are bidding tonight. As you can tell, um, some of the alternate did accept, some would did not, because I liked what we bid better. Um, we looked at all the samples, but it just comes down to what we thought fit or needs better. And if you go all the way down to the end, um, it just goes through everything, not all alternates, um, there was never all alternate on there, but total amount from the entire, um, furniture and equipment for the new elementary building is five hundred and two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. Are there any questions on this?
Peggy, what did we have budgeted for that amount at that time?
Uh, currently, we had approximately six hundred thousand and then another two hundred thousand for other items, so we're well within our budget. And we know there are some of the things that we're going to order ourselves, that, but this is just the main furniture and equipment, so it'd be student desk chairs, um, staff seating, um, cafeteria tables, media, library, shelves, go forth.
These are coming from what, like, five different vendors or something like that?
The vendors are, names are across the top. And one vendor, we did get to have a discount of just over six thousand dollars because we, um, and that is included in that number, so some of them were interim or Schmidt, um, Premier Furniture Equipment, Thing Store, Kinworthy, Ice Space, several vendors. And it does include installations.
Any other questions? Motion to accept that.
I, I just have a quick question, is there going to be bidding on more furniture, or are those going to be items that will just be purchased, as you said?
Depends on.
Are things like tubs for the locker, just things that do not meet the bid requirement. Might be like a changing table for one of the specialty bathroom, things like that, with only one of something, or possibly two or more. So no, that meets bid requirements, like these would have bid requirements on.
Peggy, correct, state bid requirements are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, correct?
Uh, correct.
So from cleaning, cleaning machines to whatever else says will be underneath that, over twenty-five thousand dollars, we have to add, look to receive quotes. So then we'll look for direct quotes or anything that costs more than that, which would be very few items at all, if any.
Okay.
Other questions? Did somebody care to move that motion ahead?
Barb Jones, I will move this, uh, motion forward, please.
Dustin Stevens will second that motion.
Motion by Barb, second by Dustin, to move the bid on the furniture, which is five hundred, two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. Any other questions? We will proceed to vote on that. Angie.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Joseph.
Yes.
And myself, the motion carries. Item number seven approval of the marching band proposal. Which is for marching band this summer that, uh, Mr. Palmer wants to start. And the amount of that bid would be, or would be two thousand, five hundred sixty-four dollars.
Um, two items on this, one, I do believe that's probably going to be short by about five to six hundred dollars, we've identified a couple other things for that, just so you realize it's going to be closer, probably thirty-two hundred. Second thing is, I would recommend that we, with our current situation, we delay this to the actual April regular session, a regular meeting now, I still get plenty of time to prep. It'll be more than a month, um, before we start marching and, um, practicing, so we can let a few more things come from the state and decide what's going to be taking place with spring activities before you commit the funds for this year.
Um, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Does this include how many times they're going to be marching, other than Mountain Lake and River Fest?
Just mo, just the first year, they're going to do Mountain Lake and River Fest, that's it.
Okay.
They're just getting started.
Okay, thanks.
So, the choice would be either to commit that, and I'd say it'd be a thirty-two hundred dollars is what we need to leave for a budget number, um, today, but we're still wondering what the state's going to do in all activities here coming up here, and we'll know more after March thirtieth. So, or you wait until April thirteenth?
We should wait to move on. See what's happening in the state level and going on.
I agree.
Should we table this until the April thirteenth meeting?
I think everybody wants to support it, but I think it'd be wise just to make a motion to table it until the April thirteenth meeting.
Okay. Actually, we don't have a, did we have a motion on the floor for that? I don't believe we did.
No, we didn't.
So we could just leave that, we wouldn't even have to table that, we could just leave it go and bring it back to the agenda next time.
That is correct.
Okay. So we'll just leave that off for now. Okay, item number eight. We need to recognize receipt of the Winfair Elementary Food Safety Excellence Award. We need to congratulate the people that work in food service at Winfair for having everything up to speed for inspections, and thank them for all the good work they do down there.
Don, the four staff members that work in that location, that need to be, um, recognized, Lenny, Bandy Borra, Brenda Puller, Sharon Brettsman, and of course, Elaine Deitchman, our food service director.
Okay, thank you.
Great job, ladies. Congratulations.
Could move on to item number nine. Review the fiscal year twenty-twenty cash flow. Mrs. Pfeffer.
Okay, I think the last time we did this was back in July, which is pretty normal for us, we usually get two or three times per year. Anything in yellow is actual numbers, um, anything that is not yellow are still what are anticipated yet to come. The main column you want to look at is the ending balance column, um, over on the right-hand side. So as you can tell, we have a strong cash flow throughout the whole entire year, um, starting right, right under four point five million, going up over six nine, and ending the year approximately going to be right around that five million dollar mark. To the right, there are some different times and terms, or there, there are ways for us to invest money to earn a little bit more interest rate. Um, the last one just came due here on March twelfth, uh, with the dropping of all interest rates. Uh, we will not be looking at doing any terms into the near future, we had tried to stagger them and it was working quite well until the last month, so, um, are there any questions regarding this, so at this time, there's no reason for us to borrow any money, we're sitting quite well.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you. Our state aides, I know they're on our da, average daily attendance.
Membership, membership.
Membership, so, okay, so for the last, uh, number of days when the students weren't attending school, that doesn't affect our state, correct?
Um, I will be doing that at number ten as soon as you're ready to go there, you guys ready to move to the next one?
Perfect.
Perfect timing, Joel, great leading. So, to give you an update, and I can, I can send you all the information, the links and everything else that I, I have for the School Board Association links, emails you've been receiving has that information also in there. Um, we are getting inundated with information, new updates, um, daily and sometimes twice a day on different items that are taking place. But what the state governor did with the executive order, he closed schools effective last Wednesday. So every day from Wednesday to this Friday, the twenty-seventh, so eighteen to twenty-seventh, count as if the kids are just in school, normal. So we're going to be made completely whole for those days, okay? Um, kids being out, um, uh, of school in those days did not account against our membership or attendance whatsoever. The day that we'll actually lose hours on is Tuesday, when we called school off on Tuesday to start the transition to this, um, distance learning plan. We have plenty of hours and plenty of days, so that's, that was an easy call for that, so that was not an issue whatsoever. I'm going to have the principals in a little bit talk about the e-learning plans, I'll be pulling those up in just a second where they're all at, not even, or you, distance learning plans, in just a second here. Um, items that are facing us, we talked about finances, I was just on a call with the commissioner, there is, uh, up in the air debate of how they're going to fund special ed paras, because they're not going to have the direct contact minutes and, uh, way that is sent, uh, way that is set up in a typical IEP and how we get funded on that. We are unsure, um, what's going to take place there. Realistically, if we do not get special ed funding on those paras, um, that would be a full one-hundred percent general ed fund cost, because we do get money on that, and we'd have to, I'm not sure what would take place at that time, but that is something that's really concerning almost every district in the state. Because of our fifty-some paras, only ten or fewer actually on general ed expenditure. The rest are through our special ed department. So how does that work, how's that fund, how's that actually make sure the districts are made whole during that time, as they came out of school, and how we service those kids, and what's going to count as services by a special ed para for those students with needs? In those areas. So that, that's probably the big what-if on the finance side sitting out there right now. Um, if you look what we've been doing, we're making everybody whole between now and the thirtieth, uh, no one loses any, uh, pay between now and the thirtieth of the month. Um, we have paras who have really stepped up, um, are helping then run our daycare system now, um, that is for emergency workers, tier one and tier two, that's on our website. Um, I'm, it's actually going to pull that up here in a second, I'm going to stop this share and pull up a different share. Hey, everybody? So where our information is hosted is on the main page of the district middle school and elementary websites for this, so this is learning plans. Can click on, you can see exactly what we're planning, and we can update these live to change items in there, and we have all live link for that, and I'll have the principals in a second talk about all those items. Um, but right now, we have an internet access survey up, that's important, so we can find out which students do and do not have internet. Food service requests, which we do on a weekly basis, today we fed, I think, a little over two, I think it's two hundred and eighty-eight students today, um, and our multiple pickup spots, we expect that to actually grow. Um, here, what we have is emergency workers, uh, the governor has dictated that we set a daycare system for tier one and tier two under the executive order. Tier one is our healthcare workers and our first responders, EMS, um, key personnel to make sure that we can, uh, operate our healthcare system. Tier two becomes much larger in order to have our infrastructure and our system run the entire process with this. Um, this list here may actually not be current as of today, because every day they've added a different area in there. Example, right now, grocery store operators are actually considered tier two right now, I believe, or are going to be considered tier two very soon, um, to allow to keep the food chain open for items within that. So, we build everything into a, a Google survey sheet form, so people can fill us out very easily for this. We have the link to see if they are tier one, tier two workers for that. So when I say get our paras, our paras have gone from serving a lot of direct needs students to, um, becoming, helping in the daycare, helping food service. Today, I think we had eighteen of them deliver meals or provide meal delivery system. We had Ford doing, um, screen at the doors, um, just asking questions and making sure people that have fevers, things like that, coming into the daycare or the food service area with that. We have about four or five that are currently working custodial shift also, help us out there, uh, being shorthanded in those areas. So I can't say enough about our food service, our office personnel, our paraprofessionals, um, custodians, and the work that they've been doing to make sure we're still operating and meeting the guidelines that the governor set forth in his executive order. And on top of that, I'll give the principals a lot of kudos of really, really driving home how we're going to run our distance learning system and the teachers and their effort and work there. Um, I basically turned over how we're going to run our distance learning system to our, uh, two principals and their assistant principals to make this happen, while we managed everything else. Um, as I told somebody, some days it feels like I'm trying to drink through a fire hose, but making decisions at the pace of a sloth. So there's a lot of stuff coming at us, and we're trying to make our decisions slow and, and thoughtful in that process and keep everybody safe at the same time. So what I'll put up for me right now is questions on what we're currently doing within the food service custodial daycare and office staff at this time. Um, because I'm going to have the principals lead each of the discussion on how they're actually going to set up the elementary distance learning plan, the middle school, high school, this learning plan, the preschool plan, which are listed on our websites in both English and Spanish, questions?
How many, how many, uh, daycare have there been so far?
Um, we've raised upwards of just over ten is all right now, but it's growing, we had like, other than our staff, we had two, um, but those numbers right now are, are starting to grow, we have ten. Um, as we, if we see more daycares with difficulties, we'll start seeing that number grow, or if things were to get worse, we'd probably possibly see those numbers grow too. And.
Yeah.
Our daycare setting is, as the teacher's gone, we're actually moving kids into rooms and making sure, ensure we have less than ten people in any room. So if we have two paras, we'll have six to seven kids in a room, that's all. If we have one para.
Okay.
Four to five, so our ratio is about as spectacular as you possibly could have, um, because we're trying to keep the social distancing and also the number guidelines, uh, under ten.
And this is for school children?
This is only for preschool through grade five, I think Bruce is trying to ask a question, I'm sorry, I cut you off, Bruce.
I guess that's what I was going to ask, was the age, how, uh, that we, how many preschool and, and, it's all elementary, basically.
Yep.
And this is a free service?
This is free. We're, uh, ordered by the, uh, ordered by the governor to provide this free service for this, so, um, as these things continue, and let's say if we're kept running this, but the pairs aren't working at, um, special ed services, we'll be asking the state to see how they're going to help offset some of these costs. It's a good service for the community, especially if it becomes, uh, more difficult in the area.
Any other questions?
Go ahead, Don. I guess I just had a question, or have we been able to, uh, close down areas of the school then and be uninhabited?
Not entirely, but we're getting few spots that, like, the weight rooms closed down, the auxiliary gym, the new gym, I don't know if any kids have been in the old gym because of rain or anything like that. Um, but as that process goes, um, we're trying to then close down the circle for sure, eventually we'll have, hopefully by Friday, Winfair pretty much isolated and closed down. Uh, because Winfair would be our backup building to reopen in case we had an issue where they made us, uh, close down middle school, high school for two to five days, we then transition everything over to Winfair. So, um, as soon as we had that building vacated, we'll do a thorough clean, and that building will sit idle, uh, waiting in case we need to use it, because, um, the state came in and said you need to do a thorough cleaning in, in the middle school, high school, and the recommendation takes two to five days for that thorough cleaning, is what they're telling us right now.
Yeah.
I, Wayne, I do have a question about how, how is this affecting the new elementary as far as the work?
Um, we have our POC meeting tomorrow, we'll know a little bit more. It'd be conjectured, my guessing, uh, I know one company had more workers there, could have been a company had fewer workers there, I don't know the answer to everything on that, but tomorrow after our POC meeting, we'll have a lot more information.
Okay, sounds good.
I think now, uh, Jamie or, uh, Brian, which one would you like to lead person, walk me through what you want clicked to sort of inform the board, or if you want to just give a sample and use one of them, and when you lead that conversation on that sample, we're doing the, this learning plan.
I can do that, that works for everybody, Jamie, just jump in whenever, everybody hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, what we've tried to do is, uh, create, uh, plans that I think are consistent with what the governor is, is telling us we need to create, and the, the state department of education have given us some guidelines on, uh, creating a, a distance learning plan that is a little bit different than our, our e-learning days that students are familiar with, um, just because of the longevity of the timing. Um, it will look a lot like e-learning in our district, simply because we are a one-to-one district, and we've got great internet infrastructure in our community, and that's actually the focus of what I'm going to be working on the next few days, is, uh, getting connectivity out to all those students that currently don't, uh, have internet access. So I'm working with Wyndham Net, uh, SMBS, um, Back Forty Wireless, uh, and also reaching out to, um, Verizon to try to get internet access, um, to those, um, folks that don't have it, so. Um, so as we, um, look at this distance learning plan, our focus is going to be on essential course content. We're in for a school now, so, uh, basically, we've got about eight weeks worth of content with the students that we want to finish up on, so, um, we know we're certainly not going to teach everything that could have been taught in the classroom. Um, our focus is going to be on the essential core content that the state, um, standards guide us toward, uh, but also reaching out to our students and creating, um, social and emotional learning, um, opportunities throughout this time, because we don't know what this time is going to mean for, for our society, and we want those important connections with our teachers and our students to continue, and, uh, and it to be an opportunity for our students to socialize as well, because, uh, this isolation is, is difficult, so. Wayne, if you'll scroll down the page just a little bit there, um, I guess what we're going to focus on is, is delivering our, um, middle and high school content via Schoology. And, and, and Schoology is our online, um, learning management system that, uh, our students are, are very used to using, and we've been using it for about seven years now. Uh, and students in the sixth through twelfth grade area are already used to using Schoology in school, uh, it's just that more of their course content is going to be delivered that way. Um, we've also created a, a distance learning day document, and Wayne, you can click on that, it's a hyperlink. Um, and this is the actual daily schedule that we're going to try to follow, uh, to the best of our abilities, with also knowing that, uh, our students might be required to provide childcare or work jobs, especially in the high school, so. Uh, but we wanted to stick to a, a schedule, so that if our teachers did want to meet live, uh, with their classes, they weren't overlapping each other, so, uh, basically, we have their, their core content taking place in the morning, and then in the afternoon, we have optional, or not optional, but, uh, independent work time. Uh, where our teachers are still available for, for contact with students, uh, but the students wouldn't necessarily be doing guided learning during that. Uh, but the students wouldn't necessarily be doing guided learning during that time. They can work, uh, independently based off of the work that was, uh, gone over in the morning. So, uh, and we also have a daily check-in with homeroom so that our, um, homeroom teachers are checking in and making sure that those students are doing all right. Uh, with what they're doing. So you can go back to that other, uh, the original plan there, Wayne. Thank you. Um, we have guidelines regarding behavior for, for video webinars. So that is, and you don't have to click on that if, um, Wayne, but that is included in our distance learning plan. Um, our teachers are keeping office hours and are going to respond to emails. We're giving guidance on the amount of time based on best practices in distance learning, uh, that we're reading about and also hearing about from other districts as they're, as they're going through this as well. And and really what we hear is, is asynchronous learning and, um, less is more. So students really struggled to be engaged for seven hours in an online environment. So we tried to be conscious of that in our planning. So, um, also trying to stick to our, our schedules to the best of our abilities. So, um, that kind of hits the high points, I think, for the middle high school. Um, this plan is on our website and
Seven o'clock.
And it's available. So, um, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise I'll let Jamie talk about the elementary plan.
Oh, I just did something.
Any questions for Mr. Joyce?
But before Jamie starts, I just want to give a, a huge shout out to our teachers and, and they put this together in a week and you know, what they're forwarding to me for feedback now is, is really, really great. And they're really focused on engagement. Um, so I, this is an unforeseen circumstance and our staff is really stepping up to the plate and um, I, I cannot believe how positive everyone is, is throughout this. So kudos to them.
Thanks for all your work, Brian. I make sure you thank the staff for all the hours they're putting in on this.
Will do.
Jamie?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So I just have to start out by saying I'm incredibly proud of the elementary staff. Um, we have pulled this together like Brian said, in less than a week. And we've even addressed things like, you know, what do we do about our students that are E L, um, you know, English learners, or what do we do about students who have I E Ps? And we really, um, came together and put together a strong plan for many times individual students or groups of students so that we can provide differentiated instruction. So the learning plans, um, for the elementary will be shared out with students and parents at the beginning of each day. And so if, if a student or the parent just goes to their email, they will find a learning plan that looks something like the sample learning plan linked here. Wayne, if you just want to click on that for me, please. So our goal here was to make this clear, um, easy for parents and students to follow along. So, um, we have a um, attendance form at the very top. So first thing in the morning, they will go ahead and click that attendance form. And then they'll go, um, it basically says, I'm here, I'm ready. Um, I have my learning plan and I'm ready to work. And then they're going to submit that. And so we, um, can account for all students that way. Um, then they're going to move into morning meeting. So I will continue to do the morning announcements like I always do. And I think you may have saw a sample of that, um, last week, if we forwarded one of those to you. Um, then we have, um, we just followed the, the schedule that the classrooms did, right? So this was the second grade learning plan. So they do math first and then they do reading. And all the blue links there, um, you know, my direction is to start at the top and go on down. And they're all videos and interactive games and, um, all kinds of fun things. Looks like this is a phonics lesson, um, teaching O I and O Y sounds to students. So it's kind of a fun way to learn, um, a little bit of a different way than what they're used to. Okay. So if you could just scroll down, you'll notice the learning targets are all there. Um, music and fayed are in there. Then we have some optional things like, art is in there as an optional thing. Sometimes it'll be, um, just a fun science or social activity. Um, and then writing is also optional at the bottom there. So you're gonna draw an Easter chick, Wayne?
I'm going to show them it. I thought that was pretty cool.
Yeah, very cool.
Well, I'm going to let that go. You guys can find that on the site and you can actually draw it at home. So now you see it, right?
Yeah, we might be here all night. There's your homework board members. You can draw an Easter chick. Okay. If you want to head back to the, um, description there of the learning plans, let's see if there's anything else we need to talk about. Um, okay. So, um, fourth and fifth grade will use Schoology just like, um, sixth through 12th. Well, um, kindergarten through third grade will use our seesaw app. And a couple of years ago, I think they brought seesaw to the school board. So it's the same app that we've been using for a few years that you're probably familiar with. Um, parents and students can contact the teachers, um, via Google Meet, which is a video chat. Um, I just have a list there of all the teachers and their email addresses. Um, okay. We did feel, so, um, again, we put this plan together very quickly, but we did still feel that it was advantageous for elementary students to have some physical learning materials in their hands at home, along with the iPad that they, you know, are used to using. So we have set up some drive-through pickup times at both of the buildings, um, for Wednesday and Thursday this coming week. So parents will simply drive up, we will have a pair of run out to the car, ask the student's name and then, um, go ahead and run in and get the, um, packet and deliver it back to the car so that we don't have, um, parents coming into the building. Um, can you scroll down for me, please, Wayne? Okay. I think that is about it there. As far as preschool goes, it's a very similar plan, except preschool does not have any iPads. Um, so their plan is simply paper pencil, um, and then interacting with the teachers via email and Google Meet. Um, preschool packets are going to be ready on Wednesday and Thursday as well. And preschool parents can pick up the packets at Winfair. Are they both Spanish?
Yep. No, they're both Spanish. So the preschool, uh, English version is not on.
Okay. I will get ahold of Georgia Ryan to get that switch. Thank you.
Yep. Questions for the principals, board members?
Thank you for your hard work.
Um, as parents, do you know as a parent, how do you know your child is reading everything that they were assigned that day? Are they going to let us know if they missed something? How's that going to work?
Yes. So parents and, or I'm sorry, teachers and students will be in contact on seesaw. And if they're missing something, the teachers will let you know.
Okay, perfect.
Any questions for the principals?
Okay, thanks, Jamie.
Would like to thank them all, thank everyone for all the hard work they've been putting into this project. I know it's happened in a short, you know, you just jump in and you just do the job. Thank you so much for everything you do. Appreciate it.
Other comments?
Our kids are very lucky to have such a dedicated staff that's willing to do all of this work and it's, please send our regards to all the teachers, pairs, custodials, secretaries, everybody, um, for all of the work that they're doing. It's awesome.
Yeah. Thanks for the feedback. I just want to add one point here before we move on. And that is the, the best plans can go great, um, as planned, but when Monday hits and 1,100 students are accessing what we're, what we're trying to do, we know there's going to be a bit of a learning curve in our community. So we just ask that people bear with us to the best of their abilities as we get, you know, the best version of this, um, hopefully very soon in the process. So we've tried to think through a, a lot of things and troubleshoot as much as we can, but you know, we just know that that first week, there's going to be things that were, we have not foreseen. So, um, I hope the public can bear with us and understand that we're trying to do what's best for the kids and, and, um, create a great engaging learning experience, um, throughout this time.
Mr. Joyce segued perfectly in what I was going to say with all these learning plans, we're in a learning curve. And we're going to be learning in real time on this. So we're going to have adjustments basically on a weekly basis, if not every couple of days, we have to make some minor adjustments. So, um, stay posted, stay tuned. We'll put out and still continue to communicate as much as we have, trying not to inundate people. Um, but we want to make sure that we have the best opportunity for our students, um, no matter how long this lasts.
I have a couple of questions. Um, so I think you've been doing a really good job using all the different resources you have available to try to keep parents as informed as possible. Um, when you log into that site for distance learning plan, I noticed it says you can be seen or it says, it said something. So can you tell how many parents have actually gone out there and referenced those learning plans?
Um, are you talking about the ones at the high school and elementary pages?
Yes. Yeah. Uh, there's a box that pops up. I'm trying to remember what it says. It doesn't, it's the very first time it says, uh, something about your, your movements are visible or something. Is there like a log that we see who was logged in and accessed that or is that not a feature?
No.
I don't think we have a feature on like that. Do we?
The website, Joel?
Yep.
Okay. To, to my knowledge, we, we, and I had to talk to Ryan Christopher, George Rogatsky, but they might be able to see the traffic that's on there, but
They can identify anybody.
Yeah, we sent it out to this morning, Jamie and I via Skylar to everybody. Um, so we know that if people have accurate email addresses within our district, all 1,100 students' families would have received it this morning. Um, and we also obviously have it on the website and it was blasted out on the Twitter and, and Facebook. So, um, we can't guarantee that everybody has seen it, of course, but
Yeah. Okay. And then, uh, our special needs students, um, is there a separate plan to continue learning or is there, how are we dealing with those students?
Sure. So I ended up meeting with grade levels and the special education team, just to problem solve that a little bit, because I didn't feel that it was fair that um, uh, special education students and students that received intervention and E L students, um, did the exact same plan. So we met and what we came up with, um, is that the case manager would take the plan that the classroom teacher designed and then modify it, right? To meet the I E P goals, um, with accommodations. And then that teacher, the special education teacher or intervention or E L would be responsible for sending that learning plan to the family.
Okay, cool.
And that's largely the model that we already follow at the middle high school, Joel, is, is more of a push-in model where the students are enrolled in the, the gen ed course and then the special education teachers work with the classroom teachers to, um, accommodate as needed. So, um, we have our courses loaded with, uh, the special education teachers already loaded as admin in their Schoology courses. So they have access to all of the course content. And then they actually have a more direct contact to the students in their caseload. So, um, I actually think that the students that are our special education learners, um, are going to have the most contact because they almost have two or three staff members checking up on them on a regular basis to make sure that they're getting the content here. So I actually feel pretty confident that, that those students are going to have more than enough wonderful adults reaching out to them.
Awesome. Yeah. I'm really impressed with what you guys pulled together in such a short period of time. I can imagine how good a job you're going to do addressing things as they, but they're inevitably going to as you're kind of learning like, oh, yep, didn't think about that. So that's, that's really impressive. Um, and this plan is set to, uh, expire at the same time that the school year calendar is still the same, correct?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Yeah, really cool work. Thank you guys.
You're welcome.
I want to, um, make note that Brian, you mentioned that due to the sudden isolation, that this will address some of the emotional needs of students. I really think that's great. It's good to hear with so many of their activities coming to an abrupt end and, uh, their emotions are running high. So glad to hear that that's going to be addressed as well. It sounds like a big part of it as well for the first few days.
Yeah. And our, our mental health staff is, is also our student support, um, office is, uh, had made plans to reach out to students that they know they see on a regular basis. But also reaching out to all students to make sure that they're getting the supports they need. But we felt it was important to keep the, uh, connection with their homeroom teachers. And in our homerooms at the sixth or 12th level is about 20 to 25 kids per homeroom. So that's a teacher that doesn't have to teach core content, you know, in all math, science, social, et cetera. Um, so they can just focus on our, are these students, um, you know, getting what they need academically, socially, um, emotionally, uh, et cetera, so that we can make sure that, um, we're trying to meet the needs of our student body here, um, in this new world that we have.
At the elementary level, um, Mrs. Muskie and Mrs. Pletcher are recording top 20 lessons. And those will be attached to the learning plans once a week. Um, and then also of course they will reach out to those, um, any student that would need their help as well.
Good to hear.
Another question, and I apologize Wayne or someone, if you've already answered this three times and I just have too short of a memory. Um, are the teachers still going to be reporting to work or when you say their office hours, is that office from home hours or what's the plan there?
It's probably going to be off, it, you more than likely be office from home hours is what we're probably going to be doing starting March. Yep. What, our goal is to keep as few people and adults in the building where we're actually serving the daycare and also food service for that and minimize the number of human contact coming through that during this time. If they're saying we have to do this, uh, for health and safety reasons, then we're going to minimize the amount of interaction that we actually have in our buildings.
Makes sense.
Another question? Okay. A huge thanks to everybody that's involved in this and keeping things going. Just remember to keep everybody safe. Okay, then we can move on to, uh, number 11, which is an update on the emergency board meetings.
All right, referring to state statute 13 D O two one, uh, point zero two one allows us to actually conduct these meetings, um, via, um, either conference call or video conference with this. Um, looking at what's taking place, I moved forward at this one for this means 72 hours notice also because short agenda and it allows us to do a test run on this meeting to see how well it works out. And I think it's worked pretty well so far. I would ask that the board at least does the meetings in April, uh, for that. And looking at this, uh, on your screen right now, um, try to find the enlarge button with everything in front of me. Oh, well. Um, I'd have you choose A as a result of the, um, Wyndham School District on Monday, March 23rd, meeting will take place and the April regular meeting, an April work session. Dates which I have right here. Let me get those out for you. Maybe the April 13th and April 27th meeting would be, uh, one of, it's one of our board members possibly participate by telephone or other electronic means. Why I say this one? Cause if it is better, we can have more people here. If not, it just has to have one person of the school board, superintendent or the legal counsel at this location. Host the meeting virtually like we are. Let's say if it gets, does get better, um, which they're not anticipating that right now. Um, SAS quote, hopefully flatten the curve out, which is the good, it's what we all hope for. Um, then we just conduct as is right now.
Concerns or questions about this? If not, then we'll entertain a motion, excuse me, to proceed with the same procedure that we've used tonight until further notice.
Further notice of the month of April.
Okay.
I'd recommend April because in April, we can always make another motion to extend if we have to. But that'd just be the 13th and 27th.
Okay.
Joel Borick, I make the motion that we continue in this fashion to conduct board meetings through April and then adjust as necessary.
I will second that Barb Jones.
Okay, motion by Joel Borick and second by Barb Jones to continue with this type of meeting for the month of April, which would be the 13th and the 27th. Any other questions on that?
Maybe our regular time?
Okay, yeah, regular time, 6:30 start.
Any questions or concerns on this before we go any further about what we're doing right here? Comments?
I think that's worked alright for me.
Bruce, we'll get you going there.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get better at it.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I will proceed to vote on that more than. Andy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion passes.
One second here, I need a kitty. Can you give me a thumbs up or that you got all the information tonight from the meeting?
I think I did.
Motions, everything, it's came across well for now for you to be able to record this from home?
Um, yes, I believe I did. Now I just did some. The April meeting is a Tuesday.
April, yeah, oh, that's right.
I don't think my, it's a ball over though.
April 14th is actually a Tuesday meeting because of Easter Monday.
I don't think I can read.
So we need a. We would need a amendment, motion April 14th, not the 13th, please. I apologize for that. I should have caught that. You get a motion to amend that because it's a resolution for it?
Sure, yeah, I'll amend the motion. It, we didn't specifically say, we just said the meeting's in April. Does that matter?
Actually, the motion, Don identified them and we have to identify the dates.
Ah, okay.
And he identified the date, so we have to make, amend the motion for the 14th.
Okay, I am in the motion to include meetings dated the 14th and the 27th in the month of April to continue as we did tonight.
I will second that Barb Jones.
Okay, thank you.
We need a vote, a vote on the motion, the amendment, and then the emotion, two votes.
So we're voting on the amendment to change the date to the 14th or the 13th. We go Angie?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And then we'll go back to the main motion, which will now read, maybe on April 14th and the 27th. And we'll proceed to vote on that. Go Angie?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Motion carries. Any other items anybody has that we need to discuss? As I think for participation. And we will continue on with whatever we need to do to keep everybody safe. The meeting will be adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.